It's September 2nd, 2020. It's 10:20 a.m. I'm sorry, I had someone in the office. So we're at the District Courtroom. The South County Courthouse, 101 Courthouse Square. We have a full quorum so we could raise, uh, rise to say the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I'm on item number three. Is there any public comment? Then I'll proceed to donations. I know Mary had some donations to, uh, to, uh, from, you know, for the food bank. It was a small donation. I don't know who it is. We can just table it and come back. She deposited anyway, but, uh, that way when Mary's available. And I don't know. We had some for the sheriff of the fire department, but we can just table that until the, next Tuesday, we'll have to have another meeting.
I'll make this, just the motion.
Okay. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, who's on Zoom? Uh, we could identify yourselves. Ms. Martinez, is that you?
Yes, County Attorney Elizabeth Martinez, present judge. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. And who else? Jorge, you're there?
Yes, sir. Jorge Martinez, SMB. Good morning.
And Mr. Ahmman is here?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm here.
At, at the last meeting, we discussed, and I said, uh, we've taken care of quite a bit of infrastructure projects in Encinal and Cotulla. The only space that we have not addressed has been the JP. JP one, JP three, and JP Constable four. And one, one of the things is, are you as the commissioners want to create an office where you have the Justice of the Peace Number One, Constable Number One, Commissioner Number One? The same thing for Precinct Number Three? That room where they're at in Precinct Three is very small. Adriano's very small. They're just, it's a very old building. And there's nowhere for you to take anybody. So I had Killa go look at some sites as well. In Precinct Four, you know, I was suggesting, we, we went through the budget process last year and we paid everybody the same. But yet the money's not coming in. And I was going to suggest, why don't you, or why don't we as the commissioners, combine Precinct Four and Five? It doesn't hurt you because you're four and five and, and build the office in Cotulla. And build the office in Cotulla.
I guess.
I mean, and then we can build an office and, and you open it up. Because they want to get paid equally. That way, everybody shares the same. Everybody has the same, doesn't affect you.
Just the JP's, right?
Huh?
The JP and Constable.
Yeah. And, and they're protected because they can, I believe they can be, and we can clarify that. But I believe they can stay in office up to three terms after that they get reelected. So they're protected to that effect.
Okay.
Now, you may want to follow that up on Ms. Martinez, but I know they're protected for, for a while. And I thought I said, uh, I thought I read 12 years, but, but, uh, because of, because of a boundary should change. So if there's a boundary change with census that throws you out, then by law, you can still run because you were thrown out for a number of years. That applies to anybody. So I said, oh, they squeezed me out on purpose so I wouldn't run. Well, if you're the incumbent, you get some.
So instead of five, it would just going to be like four?
Well, yeah.
Change all the addresses?
All, all except Encinal because you got two and one. But the people from two and Cotulla would go all the way to Encinal if you do that. Yeah. I mean, six. And that would be hard. You can't combine it, but, but it'd be very, very hard to do so. But, but it's up to you. But if it is, then it's equal. It's equal.
So what you're trying to figure out, Josh, is, uh, bring the, the JP four to town?
Well, you do four and five together. It's just JP four. Foulton serves about 60, 70 people. Each precinct, by law, when they do census, has about 1,000 people in a precinct. It varies by the census by a number of percentage points. So it might be 2% or 3% variance, I believe, you know, Larry? Something like that, 2% or 3%. So when they put two and six, they try to keep it around 1,000. When they do precinct one, about 1,000. Foulton has, you know, about 80 people in the district. The other 920 precinct five. Precinct three has about 1,000. It may vary depending, and based on a census, every 10 years it gets readjusted. But we've paid all the constables equally. We've paid all the JP's equally, but the work is not the same. You know, the work is not the same. So when you redo the boundary lines and the redistricting, when we do, then you fix it to where they all have equal work. Kind of like the commissioners. You all have only one precinct. You're two and six, and you're in four and five. And you align them that way. And we could do two. I know, uh, Judge Wyckel said he wanted precinct two, which is, which is fine.
So what you're thinking, just combine four and five so she can cover a little bit more like Raoul? He covered four and five, she'll cover four and five.
And, and you do two and six.
Two and six, and what will pick up the, the slack on six?
And you're okay because you don't have nobody in six.
No, because he's, he, he, that covers his precinct anyway.
Yeah. And they're all over there.
His precinct anyway.
In Encinal.
Doesn't work.
I don't think they would mind.
No, I don't think.
Driving.
You know, and, you know, so, uh, and, and be that because we've taken care of all the infrastructure. I mean, we have JP one in an older building. Uh, there's nowhere for precinct four to go. So by creating these offices, you have a, a place where they can go visit with the commissioner or the constable, and they have a place, a steady place. They're all getting paid full time. And, uh, you know, we get them out. The only exception is Adriano over here would have to, uh, you know, create an office. And if you build them, it'd probably be one set of plans. It'd be one set of plans. You know, with the exception of the office, unless you, you create like a small room where they can meet.
Yep.
Think, think about it. One, one of the things that you may also want to look is that we've been running out of voting places. So if you make a common room that can hold 100 people, then you have your precinct five election place, you got your precinct three election place, you know, you got your precinct one election place, and that's taken care of for the future too.
And this would be like building one building for everyone?
It'd be basically the same building for everyone.
Same building, make that whole set of plans and?
Right. And that was, uh,
Do we have to decide today? I mean, can I, I would like to have a word with them.
Mr. Ahmman is, is there, but this is the thing. It used to be that, that the JP's got paid pretty much based on percentage. So the JP's in precinct four and five got paid very, very little based on the money that came in. Encinal was the same way. And at some point, we decided to bring everybody up. But then some people say, I work more or not. So the money comes in on JP number four is hardly any. And so the work is a lot less. So if we don't, then we need to decide what's going to be very fair pay for the people. Because if they're not working and they're getting paid, it's not fair. Because, I mean, you're, we're paying, you know, some good, very good money. And, and, uh, and the work justification is not there. And even though they're elected and say, well, you can't tell us what to do. We do the budget. And we have to be responsible for the people on how we spend that money. I mean, we can get started with one, one and three. But the other thing I also mentioned, when we first started the park progress, uh, park project as well, we had talked about doing a water park. And then it kind of died out, didn't have any interest. Then Commissioner Ramírez brought it back and revived it. Mr. Ahmman studied that and planned that. And, and I think you're going to go ahead and get it, get his expertise in doing that to get it started. You know, if, if that's the case. So we've known Mr. Ahmman for years. And, you know, he did design that complex. He did the courthouse. And if you wanted to get him started on, you know, one and three, that way he can meet you. I know he's on, on Zoom, Mr. Ahmman?
Yes.
Can we get a better picture? How are you doing?
This is as good as I look. I'm sorry.
Could you hear us pretty good?
Yes, sir. I can hear you real well.
Might as well just do, might as well just do them all.
I mean, we could decide the site later. We can decide the site later.
Let him start working on it.
Huh?
Let him start working on it.
Yes, sir.
On, on, on that, Josh, what, what side were you all looking at to build?
We, we're looking at for precinct one on the site somewhere around, around the nutrition center. To try to keep everybody there. There's land.
So he would be separate?
Separate.
And, and all, every?
And we still need to find a, a place for Commissioner, uh,
I don't mind, I don't mind the yard is precinct five.
Ayala, I mean, we can do.
The county yard is precinct.
You got that other, that other between, between the, the pound and the jail. That's not the county?
No, it's city.
Oh, it's city.
Where the creek is?
The creek?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we could work around it there and expand it.
Or that, the old border patrol office and fix it.
And I asked Commissioner, uh, I mean, I asked, um, Mr. Ahmman, is there enough room for your yard back there, Commissioner? And he said he'd work with the development of that yard too. He thought he was enough room.
That border patrol station, I'll just knock it down. That'll be a good place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. You know, so, Mr. Ahmman?
Yes, sir.
The site for four and five would change. And I don't know if Commissioner Ramírez has any alternative sites that he'd like.
All right. That was the one across from this, uh, high school?
No.
No, that's the, the one across, um,
The Sumpo.
The park.
The Martinez Park.
Well, precinct three is the, the park that you designed.
Yes.
Uh, precinct one is where the construction for the dialysis in that area.
All right. Yep.
And, and precinct four, we had talked about a couple of sites. Even, we had also talked about putting it off the loop if we needed to, you know, uh, I think Mr. Dolina knows the Newman's, but you can also do the site there. You can also do the site there. And what we would need today is to authorize Mr. Ahmman to go ahead and start developing the site plans and to meet with you for the building plans of each location.
The idea is that we would, uh, have, uh, a single plan for each one of the commissioners and JP offices. So they're all very similar and they'd be based very similar on what we designed over on, um, the Martinez Park there at the health center there and the pool, using that type of permanent construction, you know, uh, structure, uh, CMU and, and veneered CMU on top of that. And the idea is we would make them all the same so they have a similar look and everybody knows that that would be a JP Commissioners Court location. Uh, the big difference is, uh, do we have a yard behind the one that we looked at for precinct three? And then, um, is there any other extra storage space? We'd have parking in reality, um, somewhere, um, you know, directly adjacent to the JP office. But we would have, uh, if we do a, a parking for equipment, it would be somewhere behind it or remote so that even if we had one, um, over there next to the fire station, there's an entry off the back street so the equipment could come in and out without coming in through the park. Was the reason I looked at that one over there. Um, the other one, um, was behind the, the new dialysis building. Um, and, uh, that was up on the, it goes up the hill there. And I think that was property that was already owned near the cemetery there. And then we, we looked at one across from the high school, but that's not, that wasn't on county property. That was the one that the judge just spoke about. But we'd be starting the design, but it would be one design for all three.
What about, no. Well, we got the drainage. Are you, I don't know?
Yeah, he, he was looking at the drainage.
Where the drainage is?
He was looking at the, well, that's a place that's close to around a drainage. And that's why today we would authorize him to proceed with the site plan and the, the plans for each facility and work with you on the final site. So that way, if you feel after he designed it, you know, it's not going to fit. Yeah. I think we go over here, then each commissioner would decide where it goes. So that's what we wanted to today, but, uh, that way he can start, start on, on, on that. And, you know, there's some other land that's for sale in the surrounding. And I know people want park space and more baseball plays. And there's also some private interest in those properties for development. And I'd rather see how it plays out with a private interest because maybe, you know, we can get that property for, for additional park space cheaper. But there's, oh, there's a need for different access to fields. I mean, they're, and we told, told them, but we can put that on a, on a later date. But, uh, for now, Mr. Ahmman, you know, we would need a motion to authorize Mr. Ahmman to proceed with the site plan and, uh, um, the architectural plans for each facility and for him to work with each individual commissioner for the respective construction. Uh, you know, for, um, you know, approval, meaning that you're going to decide where the three finally rest. You're going to decide four, then we come back and authorize it for, uh, for bids.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion for Killa Salmon for the county projects for precinct one, three, and four, and for the JP offices and the county commissioners.
One second, Judge.
Okay. Motion has been made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I know we have Mr. Fry here and we had easements on water easements, and I'll take care of those first. Um, one is just to get it recorded. Uh, it may need a, a different type of, of document, but the permit forms that we have are only for like the water lines, the oil field. They really don't apply to what you're trying to do in Mr. Dolina. But there's also statute in the road and bridge statutes that the commissioners cannot disallow a water utility or a city government or another entity from installing a water line. However, we would like to get it recorded into the deed records. So for the city Cotulla is running water to Newman property along the trench. So basically, we just need a right of way agreement. And the same thing for precinct four.
Mr. Fry?
For, um,
Foulton.
Foulton. So we would just need to authorize Mr. Ramos to create the, the, uh, agreement because he has to do it for the city because he already knows that deed. He's the one that prepared that deed, uh, to go ahead and, and do it. And that way, it don't stop the construction. You can get it going. And then we just record it.
I'll make that motion, Judge.
Second. The motion has been made and second, Mr. Dolina, is there anything else that you need, uh, from us? Are you going to be doing a sewer line also?
Commissioners, we're trying to find a, a right of way to, to do a sewer line. Uh, we are in the process of putting in a 12-inch line loop. We already have an easement from the Newman's that comes down toward the bypass that would intersect at the point that you would give us a permit to connect back to 97. Uh, we are bringing, uh, to the court a, uh, hangar lease that we have, uh, executed with the, uh, current fixed-based operator at the, at the airport. He is in the process of putting in, uh, a hangar that'll be about a million dollars. And that'll have, uh, I believe, two jets and a large turboprop plane that will be based here in, in Cotulla. And, and so we expect that that development will soon begin once that construction starts sometime this year or early next year. Uh, we will put in a sewer line as well in order to eliminate the septic system that is currently out there. Uh, we've also completed the airport terminal that was constructed, uh, through, uh, an interlocal agreement. The city and the county both own the airport jointly. Uh, the city operates the airport, but all of the leases and the transactions that occur at the airport come before the court and before you, Judge, uh, in order to get concurrence with the activities that basically go out there. Uh, we expect that, uh, we will see further development at the airport. We got real close to, to getting, uh, some border patrol units assigned here till somebody threw us a blocks, so to speak.
Yes, sir. I know who.
You know who. Uh, and, uh, we expect that, uh, at some point in the future with the development that is occurring there, that we will still see a portion of those people coming into town. And that, that brings economic activity, and it also brings people who can be residents of the community, uh, who have very well, very good paying jobs.
Well, great. Um, I know that when they constructed the, the loop, they put in some sleeves. I hope they're big enough for the, the sewer as well.
They, we've, we've exposed those sleeves and, and, uh, I know Jorge Martinez is on the line and, and he worked, uh, with us to make sure he knew the line, the size of the lines that we were putting in so that we wouldn't disturb the asphalt. And so we made preparations for that. Uh, we're also tying in and we will be out for bids for a new water tower that'll be sited just, uh, west of the, uh, the current fairgrounds. Uh, and it'll be a 250,000 gallon water tank so that, uh, it will create a little more water pressure within our system because it is at an upper elevation and the rest of the city is, is in a valley.
Well, thank you. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Fry, was there anything you'd like to address the court?
No, I just want, just here to answer any questions that anybody might have concerning what we're asking. We're just asking for, uh, to run a water line for a resident up, up the hill.
And what, what road is that going to be?
Sherman.
Sherman. And what street is it running from?
It'll run from a, a little ways off of Highway 97. Probably a, a block south of 97 is where we'll hook on to our water system.
Jorge, could you get the information from Mr. Fry? That way, uh, it could help Mr. Ramos in the preparation of the right of way agreement?
Yes, sir. I will do. I, I've already reached out to them, let them know to create the agreements for both entities so that we can get it, um, executed.
So, yeah, we, yeah, we made, uh, the motion and second. Anybody have any questions?
On what?
No.
The easement. On, on that water, when you want a water line that way, anybody out there going to lose any water pressure or anything?
Say that again?
Is anybody going to lose that water pressure?
No, it's, no, that should not happen. No, we have, we have plenty of pressure right now. We serve very few people. And this will be one addition.
You're running an eight-inch line, right?
Excuse me?
How big is that line going to be?
It's going to be a two-inch line.
Two-inch line?
Yes, sir.
Remember also, there, there's some grants available from CDBG that Carl was trying to work on last year that we tabled, uh, for Fowlerton and Gardendale expansion.
That could work.
And we probably need to bring it back to see whatever upgrades because every time that money's available, we got to go for it and try to be, uh, proactive in it. So, you know. So we can, we can stay on top of it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then Gardendale as well. So we'll look at that. So we'll meet with you shortly on that.
All right.
Carl, are you there? Is that on board yet?
It's there, sir.
Yeah. Well, right now, we just have the issue of the right of way agreements and we'll bring that topic back and we'll talk to you. You know, to see what your needs are.
How soon did you need to do it, Mr. Fry?
Uh, there's no rush, but, uh, the person that wants to live at this facility is, you know, he's like,
Well, you, you can start on the water. We're going to come back with agreement. So we'll get the agreement and then call you up and go get it.
Y'all are going to contact us?
Yes, yes.
All right. And we can proceed.
What, what is your phone number?
Eight, three, oh.
Eight, three, oh.
Three, seven, three, four, three, eight, five.
And I'll call you, Mr. Fry?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the table? In a second?
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Road reports, it's going, there's going to be time to do them again. And, uh, I don't know if you wanted to get the help of Mr. Martinez preparing them or you're going to want to, um, complete them yourselves? You know?
On, on, on mine, Judge, I talked to Jorge Martinez and to go ahead and prepare the road reports for, um, precinct two and six, that we can start working on them.
They're already complete, Commissioner.
Okay. Yeah, I had talked to him about, uh, on my report, Judge.
So, yeah, um, and that's, I don't know what you want to do on yours?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and use Jorge.
Go, Jorge. I know, um, so, yeah, uh, I know Commissioner Nieves and I worked on his last year, but they do take a lot of time and it's short. Uh, but, um, if you want to authorize him to, uh, to, uh, get started, do you want to prepare your own again?
Nah, let Jorge work on it.
Okay. So there'd be a motion to authorize, um,
SMB?
SMB to, um, prepare the, the road and bridge reports. Uh, what's also turned out is that when we work on this is we get with Tech dot on the Brent sap reports. And Tech dot gives us the reports on the ratings. And that's pretty much when we put the fuel to get And that's pretty much when we put the fuel to get started on the other funding. Uh, and it looks like out of your road and bridge, it looks like you're going to get a bridge taken care of. Jorge, any any more news on that? On the Tech dot?
Yes, sir. The latest is I'm providing them with the estimate and submitted an estimate and they they review and give us credit for that amount. So if we have a bridge that we're replacing for $500,000, they're going to find us a project to fund another bridge and and get the match. So that's the plan at this point. So I'm providing them with estimates for that bridge in La Cuchina so that we can get credit and fund another bridge.
So that frees up your money to spend somewhere else. That's good. So we who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, say aye. Jorge, since we have you here, let's go to number seven. Eight. Uh, nine, 10, 11. We discussed 12 already. 14. Okay. So number seven is discussion and our possible action to accept final change order. Number three for Anderson Columbia for CTRR project. To include proposed final change order will reconcile all project quantities and add additional channel improvements along IH 35 Frontage Road for total change order of 169,954.79 and receive determination for delay damages on project uh to be negotiated with Anderson Columbia out of the 745,805 retainage contract balance. And I guess you can cover that on, you know, if you could, you know, talk us about it.
I can explain. So so the first thing is the reconciliation of all the quantities. This is all the adds and deductions uh as a project went through uh in completion. So after you complete all the items that were installed physically by the contractor, uh we have a total amount. There's also some channel work along IH 35 that we're recommending approval so that uh we there was an existing fiber optic cable from Valley Telephone that meanders through 35 that conflicted with the channel. So to help alleviate the drainage underneath the crossing, we're asking to extend a channel a bit so that we can get the water to to drain to the south as a and avoid that conflict. So the total with all the adds and deducts for this this item and the reconciliation and this channel improvement nets in a total change order of 169,954.79. Uh, we're recommending approval just so that we can move forward and close it out uh if the commissioners do so choose to. Uh, I did want to point out, we did have a retainage in the contract for 745,000 that still has has not been paid out. That's another item that will be coming in regardless of the the addition or uh or of the change order and the reconciliation.
Now, in reference to the change order in the budget, is the 169,954.79 still in the budget? Is there still sufficient money in the?
In the original contract amount, be answered, yes. So it's it's if we had, if you look at the the total contract amount as of today, the total contract with all the previous change orders uh that were on was 14,5, 14,515 is where it was. So this would increase the total contract amount to 14,685.742 with 15 cents. Now, I've been and I'm sure the contractor is listening and he's on the call. I didn't, he's not on the Zoom, but uh we were trying to figure out a schedule. So if this does happen and it gets approved, they have uh committed to finishing the the following week, seven days, uh the the channel work and remaining punch list items. There are some punches items to they had to come back and do, and they were trying to do it all at once, including fencing work, some grades, some different things we pointed out in the punch list. So their intent is to come back, knock everything out and and leave the job and open it for at the county's direction.
They'll do the fencing under the bridge for the cattle?
Yes, sir. That that no, no, that's going to be a separate separate item. Uh, I'm recommending that once the contractor's out of the picture, we we get somebody local that they can do the the work and and I think the company would save overall.
Now, uh, Mr. Martinez, have you reached out to the Newmans to make sure they're in approval of like the fence work and everything else?
Uh, at this point, I have I have not reached out to the 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 Newmans regarding any concerns with the fencing. They did see the punch list with us. I mean, they have noted things when we're out there during our punch list review. I met with the commissioners uh so far. But um as of now, I haven't got any feedback from Newmans, but I can reach out to them to make sure that there's no issues. Because there is some gates that have been knocked over since that are part of the punch list to be repaired. Uh, including some of the fence work, some of the posts have leaned over. So there's things that need to get done on it. Uh, but today I haven't had any complaints, but we'll reach out just to double check with them.
Uh, Mr. Martinez, because it's very important that they do pretty much bless it because they wanted access. They wanted to make sure that they their cattle or livestock, because you know, it varies from time to time, uh could cross over.
Yes, sir. And with your approval, uh I would like to 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 propose we do that work after Anderson's complete um so that we can get a local fencing contractor to do it in the way we want. That way it isn't delayed anymore. But if you so choose.
And and as long as they're on board with that, uh uh to make sure they're happy with that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we, they did donate the land, but they had put a condition that if we didn't finish the project within their timeline, then we'd have to pay them. And I want to make sure you're still within the timeline. And uh so we can get that deed restriction off.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So are you at substantially complete now or have you substantially issued them issued it?
Yes, it was issued in May when the project was 99% complete. Now, the pending items are the punch list and the additional work and that's it.
So now that you're substantially complete, um then I guess you reach out to Mr. Ramos to follow through on on getting that deed restriction off.
Yes, sir.
So what are you asking us to do today to go ahead and approve the?
I I'm recommending approval on change order number three for the additional channel work and the reconciliation of quantities at this point.
I do not have the 169,000 dollar change order. Do you have it or did you send that as well?
I I thought I did. I'm looking, I can forward it to the group.
Can you email it and I'll table this item and then we'll take it up after lunch?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. The table till after lunch?
Like like on process on that 169 on the change order, will will just make a difference from the 745 or what?
Well, the 745 is what he's saying is left in the contract to pay them. The 169 is additional to the contract.
But but we will be deducted from this?
They're going to add it on to the 14 million.
That 745 is what we still owe the contractor now.
But those are from the delay damages.
Well, we haven't discussed delay damages and that's why, you know.
But if it would come from the delay damages, we could get it from there.
When we address delay damages, then we negotiate them out of the 745. The 169 is something on the side.
Something on the side, buddy.
And that's why I asked him, do you have enough money in the contract to cover the 169? He said, yes, there's still enough money in that in that in that contract.
He mentioned 14 million, so we have more than that.
We budgeted more than that. What was the total budget?
Jorge. The total budget, the original contract amount was 14,249 and there was two change orders issued throughout the life of the job. And it went up to 14,5. This would increase it to 14,6.
Do you remember what the total budget amount was?
I want to say it was somewhere at 16, 15 or something like that at one point when we first programmed it, but the the actual contract amount is what what I'm reflecting right now. This is what Anderson was asked to submit for.
Because we remember we started at 10, right? And then.
Yeah, start 10 and then they made it.
More and more.
It's around 16 million.
When do you anticipate that we can open it?
It the the roadway is is safe and open, ready to open now. All the safety features have been installed. Everything's ready to go. Um, it's at your your discretion if you guys want to open it now or you want to wait till they finish any channel improvements if approved, but um they've been wanting to open it for a few months. I know this this COVID kind of delayed it a little bit. We're talking about different things, but it's up to you guys.
For the contractor's purpose, I didn't I wanted them to finish everything. That way there wouldn't be be delays there with the equipment going in and out.
That's right.
You know, kind of like what we've seen with incident on on that project, you know.
Still have to replace the rail already.
The what?
The rail, the railing.
They replaced the railing already?
And which section?
It wasn't left, no?
I think you said on the left going going northbound?
Was it on the left?
The the ones that we went over in the field, those are still part of the punches that need to get done. They're still going to be doing that.
Well, we can't open it until they're finished.
Oh, you. That's correct. That is the one you're talking about is a change order. That is part of that work.
You know, it it it's kind of like once you open it, use it. Sometimes it's so hard for them to come back and work on it. And that's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's what we ran it into incident on. We got the kitchen going and then um let to shut the kitchen down because it smelled gas. Well, it turns out that they didn't change it to to propane. It was still natural gas and what I thought. So then they're struggling to keep it going. And I'd hate to create that situation over here. Said, get it final, get it done. And then.
Because the fence won't won't hurt us, won't.
The fence won't hurt us.
We're going to be on the bottom.
The fence won't hurt us, but if there's railing issues, you know, it's done. But you said within a week?
They said they they committed to seven days from approval of uh of everything so that they can do not only do this work, but the punch list items are pending.
We we can table it and then just come in with a day where where we uh for next week. Not want to table it until we get the change order. I want to see the change order because we got to put it into the minutes after that.
I just sent it.
Table till after lunch and then um speak to Anderson to give us a definite end date. And then there's a lot of space. We could just have a very simple ribbon cutting. I know because y'all have been wanting to open it. And then and then we'll do that.
Yes, sir.
So there's a motion by Commissioner Ayala. Was there a second? Who's the second?
Second.
We're we're going to table till after lunch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, number eight, pretty much going along the same thing. Um, discussion, action, review, final construction, contract time of Anderson Columbia. How many um delay days are you actually really looking at?
So as of now, based on the, I'm sorry.
I said to the point that you issued your substantial completion, right?
Yes, sir. That as of May, I believe is 11 to 12, there's 102 days that that were outside of the allotted time uh that are considered liquid damages. Uh, I know contractors claimed a lot of delays, you know, over the last few years on different items. And we've gone over them several times in Commissioner's court. Um, but there's 102 days that that are shown in the contract at this point. And the liquid damage daily rate is a thousand dollars.
In working out the the delay damages, you are um taking into consideration in that determination, the delays from Union Pacific, right?
They, uh, yes, sir. The the delays between Pacific over the life of the project has been substantial and the contractors claiming that they were subject to more costs and more more delays that they had not yet brought forth, but uh they they I I will say that this job, they have been impacted severely by that. Um, but at this point on paper and what's in the contract is that they have this many days and this is what they went over. So um, it's at the Commissioner's course discretion how they want to proceed. Like I I will tell you, Anderson Columbia has been diligent. They've done what we've asked. They haven't really, you know, they've they've done everything that we've asked them for. I know sometimes there wasn't a lot of workers out there and and we would note it several times during our inspection, but at this point uh we're just recommending that we try to close out this job and move on and however the commissioners and the one who move forward with.
On on the Union Pacific, the key thing to look at is that Union Pacific had specific requirements for the county to do and specific requirements for the contractor to do. You know, safety, flagman. Um, so it was very important for Anderson Columbia to reach out and work with Union Pacific in providing those changes. So one of the things that we should consider, Commissioners, if they were defective and providing Union Pacific creating additional delay or delay in there because it was their fault. Yeah, we 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 need to consider that in negotiating. But if it was a Union Pacific delay in doing that, you know, uh then you know, we we need to figure that that out. And and that would probably be at an executive session meeting. Under contract negotiations section. So uh, there's no action to be taken right now?
It's it's up to you if you on the number eight, correct? You're on number eight?
Yeah, on number eight. I wouldn't take any action. I'd ask to table that item until uh until uh they're completely complete, but table item, but not authorize uh final payment, complete final payment until until uh until we negotiate it. So I'd say withhold 100,000 from the 745 even project is completed until we negotiate that balance.
Understood. Okay.
Because I just signed that. I just signed a bill.
Fighting for how much?
Seven hundred thousand.
We haven't paid it yet, right?
No, 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 that that was for payout number 27. So that has not been that.
That's a separate, that's a separate one.
There's still money out there. Yes, sir.
So not saying it's possible that we'll, once we hear amount that we give them the whole amount, but let's let's make sure that we we justify it. Okay, um, so we would need a motion table uh and authorizing to withhold uh 100,000 dollars for delay damages to be negotiated with Anderson Columbia.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Number nine, Jorge.
I would like to just talk to the the court about considering a some type of groundbreaking ceremony or, you know, you know, to kind of inform the public of this new project that's just started construction. So I just wanted to see the commissioners and the judge have anything they want to go forward with.
You know, we've we've had a number of projects, both the city, the county, that people don't know that they're county or city. And in Senado, the facility is really nice. The building's nice. You've finished road projects. And you just haven't had any uh idea. People really don't know what's going on over there. And 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 it's it's good because there's such a need for dialysis that it and it's already under construction that it'd be good to have. You know, someone to see all out there, you know, that this is your project. It's the same thing with with Mr. De Valena. They've yeah, we we've helped them with money, but really the development of the airport has all been the city. The work has been done. They deal with the books, the work. And you know, we're here supported, but the but the actual work has been Mr. De Valena for the development. And it's, even though we're co-owners, it's pretty much understood that you're the one that that runs with that project and develops it. And you've done a good job. It's the same thing with dialysis. Once it's on its own, you know, it should be fine, but people don't know how it started or, you know, that it's a Department of Agriculture is paying for part of it. And then you know, one of the last things Commissioner Hino also asked me because he was doing dialysis was build a dialysis center. It's the last thing he asked me. And uh, and there's a need and there's a need, but but people don't know. So got to arrange a date to where you you know, people see this is the work because they. gotta arrange a date to where you, you, you know, people see this is the work because they, we have the stuff that goes here in Commissioner's court. But after it's done and also the plans are, then I start meeting with everybody and we start working and I bring the changes back. But it's, all these projects take a lot of time. You all have to go visit. You all have to look, you know, decisions here. So it, it takes a lot of work. So it's important that, that, that we take a day and go look at the facility, see where it's at, give you an idea to where you have a visual, what it's gonna look like and, and go out there. Mr. Martinez, any, any date, any day uh, you're looking at?
Uh, it's your discretion. Uh, wherever everybody is available, um, I would assume we would have it outdoor. It'd be outdoors at the site um, on a good morning. Um, I know the contractor's gonna be putting up the project sign uh, soon. So once that comes up, it'll be a little easier and then we can uh, designate a date, but it's really your, your, I'm at your mercy, whatever day you prefer.
But I'd really like you all inside to go look at it and have a visual where it's at. You know, and, and maybe there's things that we have to do for parking or, or something else. Uh, but you have a visual where it doesn't interrupt anything. Um, you shoot for the eleventh? Anybody know the schedule?
Next Friday?
Yeah. Well, uh, I, I know that there's gonna be a small ceremony for the the uh, nine-one-one center. A small, you'll probably get a small invitation for the Commissioner's Court for the nine-one-one. All, all the work's been done because it's pretty much state of the art and I think you're gonna like it. And I think we should work around that. So when we get done with that, we do the other one or vice versa. That way you don't lose all your morning to just one.
We do both. So next meeting will be the eleventh too?
No, that, that'd be just uh,
Groundbreaking.
Oh, for the, either ground, groundbreaking or site review or whatever we, we do.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Do it on the same day, just you're saying?
Yeah, boot up around it. Cause when we finish one, we'll go do,
We'll do the other.
The other one. Because uh, they've made a lot of work. The communications have been improved. It, it's awesome. Uh, and I think the dispatcher's gonna be excited in, in reference to getting that out, but I think it's also gonna be probably safer for them too. And it's such an important call and they get some, so many calls now that the way the jails decided uh, constructed, they can hear all that backroom noise in the jail. So they should make it a little bit more to where they can concentrate and focus only on
On the call?
On, on the call. And I, I think they have some screens like that. They have like six of them across the wall to where, and and they got a counter to where they're looking at it and it, and it's improves. Not only that, they also have access to the courthouse. You know, if something happens, they can dispatch quick. So, I mean, they've looked at so many different things and I think everybody's worked hard. Uh, Danny Earl's been very involved. Don's been very involved. Sheriff's been very involved. So they've middle rail. They've been working with middle rail. So it, it's a big project that y'all made happen. And, and I think it's be safer and um,
What time will this be, Judge?
Well, I, I'll send an email. We just want to pick a day because I don't know what time they're gonna do theirs.
Okay.
And it, and, and I know there's kind of social spacing, but give you an idea to walk in because once once it's open, it's gonna be very hard to go back into the room because it's an operational time because of the information that's there. So chances are the normal citizen that once it's open, it's not gonna be able to see it unless, unless you're employed with the county. And even us, we don't have access to it anymore. So,
I'll make that motion. September eleventh, you said?
September eleventh.
It's gonna be in the morning, right?
Yes. We don't know yet. Yeah, it'd be morning. We'll, we'll work it out in the morning. Sheriff, I said good things about you and you weren't here. Huh? Who, who made the second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Um, for the eleventh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Precinct number two, material bids. Uh, discussion, possible action to award material bids for precinct number two uh, for Coquet, Coachina and Kruger Road. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, sir. So we received a few bids, three, three different bidders for that material bid for precinct two. It is for type A grade one, which is limestone. Uh, we received bids from Vulcan Materials, RWC Materials and J and J Excavating. Uh, based on the bids and the amount, the quantities that we requested, the low bid for each roadway uh, per cubic yard, uh, the low bid was RWC Materials. And, and it went in this order for La Coachina Road. Their unit price was at twenty-three seventy-five a yard. For Coquet Road was thirty dollars a yard and for Kruger Road was twenty-nine dollars a yard. These, these unit prices is delivered to the, the roadway.
How, how much for um, for uh, um,
The further was Coquet?
Kruger Road?
Kruger Road is twenty-nine dollars a cubic yard. Coquet, Coquet Road was thirty dollars a cubic yard. And Coachina Road was twenty-three seventy-five a cubic yard. And these are, like I said, mentioned, these are delivered. Not, they're, they're not working anything on the road or anything. It's just a delivery to the roadway at the uh, the, the board grader, the Commissioner's discretion. Uh, we did have an estimated quantity based on the amount that, that was requested by the Commissioner. Um, so if you were, and then if you look at the spreadsheet on one of the printouts, uh, if you were to add up the estimated quantity, which could be plus or minus, it's not a guaranteed amount. Uh, the total bid, the total amount for all three roads would be somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. If we order the entire quantity that was advertised.
How much were you looking at?
The total for the three, six fifty-one, three seventy-five.
But based, because it's on quantity, um, then it's gonna give you an idea to be able to adjust it to budget and it's you know, something that's allowed by uh, to be able to be, be bid that way. One, um, all the bids that were filed, they were filed with the county clerk, right?
Yes, sir. Everything, everything was advertised and bid out as required.
Oh, Mrs. Skella, Mrs. Skella has copies of all the bids and the records?
Yes.
Okay. So, so that was done. And this is only for the delivery or is it a price that includes spreading?
No, this is, this is provide material and haul it to the designated roadway at the designated location um, requested by the Commissioner.
Did, did you get a separate bid for water?
No, sir. This is just the material for, for, for limestone. So the, I believe the Commissioner or they would have to do that on their own or with their own equipment if they would like the water. And it's same thing with the motor grader and everything that needs to go with this work.
All right. Um, so this is um, just delivered.
Yes, sir. This is flexible base type A grade one-two delivered to each designated road.
Okay. Having watered.
Huh?
Having watered with the same amount. I mean, he could do that. I mean, they're gonna be there.
You know, who, who was that company from?
RWC.
R, RWC.
RWC.
So who, who were the other bidders? Who was the second lowest?
Uh, J and J.
J and J.
So it was just only two bidders?
J and J.
It was three.
That's gonna be limestone?
Limestone.
Yes, sir.
Where's he coming from? C- C- Cando?
Huh?
What, Cando?
Where's the limestone coming from?
This is J, is, the source is JJ Excavating. Uh, they did provide a uh, lab, materials lab report as part of their bid uh, at the county's direction. Typically, we recommend that uh, we, the county get a lab to certify or double check the material before we make any orders. So if the county so chooses, we can coordinate with a lab to go get some testing done, additional testing, just to verify what we're getting.
Jorge, on, on, on that uh, for um, for Kruger Road's gonna be crushed limestone. And on the rest, it was gonna be uh, just that uh, uh, tested, the tested regular road material?
No, these are all limestone. We, we, all, all of them are limestone.
A straight limestone?
Yes, sir. All three, all three of them are limestone.
Oh, all three limestone, okay.
So into testing, I would think that you want to test a pit a couple of times going on. You know, whenever, whenever they start, I don't know if they're gonna be working all roads at one time or just focusing one road. But I'd say before they start each road and at end of each road, you have a test beginning and end.
Where does J and J have?
Huh?
Where does J and J have a pit?
I don't know. Where's JJ have their pit?
Uh, we have copies of the, the records. Uh, it's, it's in the Caliso area. Uh, that's where. Now, just, just to know that this material, RWC will, the way they presented their bid is coming from that same pit. So the, the, one of the bidders was providing the source and the delivery and RWC is, is providing from that same location.
So in essence, RWC outbid the owner of the uh, the land and the bidding of the products.
Pretty much, yes, sir.
So what J and J didn't lose anything because they still have the material?
That's right. They're still, they're still gonna get uh, some of those words. Just for clarification, JJ is also the, the lead wig low bid um, that we'll discuss later. So I'm just saying everybody's aware.
Yes, sir. You want to accept it?
I want to go ahead and accept that. Like on that one, I just, I'm gonna have to need some water. Cause it was a bitted job.
Yeah, it, I would just get some pricing.
Just get some.
You probably have a number of, because all fills down. So a suggestion, I said, you know what? Give me uh, three um,
Three different pricing.
Three, three bids and just keep them.
Keep alternative to Marge.
Yeah, and
And go from there.
Keep it for your records. I mean, keep it for your records or, or you can give it to Marge if you want.
Okay.
But, but it's not gonna be fifty thousand dollars, but, but uh, I, I, I would just get three prices for that because you know, whatever it rains, whatever it rains and you don't need it.
Yeah, I hope it rains.
What if it rains and you don't need it?
Yeah.
But I would get some, some pricing.
Is that your motion, Jeff, or do I make a motion?
Um, the motion's been made. You made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Precinct three materials.
Item number eleven. Uh, we received three bids again for the precinct three uh, material bid and the roads were for two county roads, Alar Camp Road and Hollandam Road. The low bid for uh, Alar Camp Road was RWC Materials again, in the amount of twenty-five dollars per cubic yard. The low bid for Hollandam Road was twenty-six dollars per cubic yard delivered, very similar to the previous item. Uh, based on the quantities that we, that we advertised and like I mentioned before, it's plus or minus. There's no guarantee on the total. The total if awarded to the low bid, uh, which in this case is RWC Material, it would be in the amount of, for both roads, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in total.
Four hundred and sixty-nine?
Yes, sir. Four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred. If we do order the entire advertised quantity. And I'll repeat the, the twenty-five dollars per cubic yard was Alar Camp Road per cubic yard delivered and Hollandam was at twenty-six.
Is that gonna be limestone also?
Yes, sir. It's the same material, type A grade one-two. And delivered to the site, no water, no spreading. This is just at the Commissioner's discretion when they want it delivered to each roadway.
So, so it's gonna be what, twenty-five at a time?
A cubic yard. Yes, sir.
Now, on Alar Camp and Hollandam Road, uh, is this any, is any of this material going to the areas that you're planning to pay? To where, you know, it may make Commissioners' projects go further on the, on the text dot deal or is it separate?
This, this is a, so the text out one that the Commissioner has is just for the bridge and the approaches. So that this is not including those areas as we discussed. This is a, a certain segment, like on Hollandam as an example. It does not include that. It will not duplicate the work.
And, and the um, the other bidder was the same, JJ?
Yes, sir.
Excavating?
Yes, sir. And, and if you do have a copy of the bid tabulations, if you would like me to read the other bidders totals we can as well.
Now, um, likewise, as I said before on precinct two, uh, all the bids were received by the county district clerk. She kept them. You made copies. You analyzed them.
Yes, sir.
Reporting to us.
Yes, sir. And then the same concept as far as testing, we would like to follow the same, same approach, uh, testing before and after uh, as we order for each roadway.
And none of this work has started yet, right?
No.
No, sir. No.
And we're gonna stay away three hundred feet from each end of the bridge for the construction.
Okay.
Three hundred that way and three hundred.
Good room. That makes sense. So is there a motion to approve the price? I'll make the motion there.
Second. And, and another question on this project. Say the trucks end up getting here late. It's under construction, but I have a line item under contractor. Can I use some of that contractor money and have an operator under our maintainer to finish, finish up? Instead of how you might guys build up their comp time?
The, if, if you're gonna get it, if you're gonna use your maintain, you get an operator, I would say get a bid price.
Okay.
Get a bid price. Get some bids. Um, especially if they're gonna use the county motor grader, get a bid price. Um, and that's what, what I asked earlier is, is it just to deliver the material? But if they're gonna spread it, then you know, usually think that county people are gonna do the spreading. If they're not gonna do spreading, get three, three prices because that's separate. Cause there's a thing in the government code that says aggregate. Aggregate purchases are, and we've seen it before, is to build a bridge, to build a road. It's A, B, and C. So you got the, the driver, the material, the operator, the supplies they buy at the store. All those go into one single price. So we bid it out of project, but then we got these additions. And, and we don't know what those additions are gonna be because we don't, we haven't started. Once we start, things happen. I mean, the materials, some get the three prices because it's a bitted project. And then that way you, you're, you're, you're covered. I mean,
Like Commissioner, I'm not that, he's gonna pour water and you'll bid for me, you know?
Yeah. So it's the same water. So you know what? You know, this, this contractor has water, but we didn't bid out water. We didn't bid it out as complete project. I need a truck. But just as a safeguard, I said, you know, we got prices that day. I got so-and-so, give me an estimate here, here, here. Go. And I think that would cover you. You know, provided that that you know, work is, is anticipated less than our policy, which is fifty thousand dollars.
Judge, I would recommend, I know when it's less than fifty thousand, like you're mentioning, is if you're gonna go off for bids for different components, water, whatever it is, that you make them all do at the same time, same date, so that there's no, there's no confusion. There's no, hey, he saw my bid. No. Just submit the biz to the county clerk like you normally would. But just so it's, it's, it's uh, it's clear.
Yeah. So I mean, if you think you're gonna get a water, provide, give me a water bid. Have Margie hold it and and uh, but you don't, you don't have to wait. You don't have to wait to come to Commissioner's Court.
Just get the bid.
And that would be a suggestion because it's outside of this, but that's why I asked, it was deliver only or not, because you got, when you put someone on a county equipment, then there's some insurance problems and something happens and it becomes very uh, complicated. You know, are they being drug tested? Are they this or that? I mean, so I prefer that you keep county people on county equipment. But if, if you run into hard time and you have to do it, get three prices and make sure that that operator has insurance. I'll make the motion. So the motion was made second by um, Rashadba. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We've covered number twelve already. We've covered number twelve already. And Mr. Ramos is on the road today to the doctor, but he did get a judgment last week on the Ferris construction uh and the amount of X is five million. Do you remember how much, Margie? Five million, five million, one hundred thousand, something like that, right? You know, one million ninety six thousand dollars, which is a seventy four thousand dollars in in additional charges that you did in repairs and and ten thousand in attorney fees. So we got a final judgment. So from here, it goes to the insurance and bonding company to ask them to pay uh the judgment because it was a bonded project. So he did get a judgment, so that's the first step in in getting it fixed.
No action needed, Rick.
Huh?
No action needed.
Yes, and number fourteen, um Leadwick Road. Uh, discussion possible action on award of Leadwick Road project, Jorge?
So this is the item we brought last time. We had the commissioner's court in Nantucket. Uh, we we've already, as discussed by the court, we went and called a bunch of references and looked into each of the contractors or tried to get information from each one and whatever references were were put down. Um, we did get some responses. Uh, the top three where where we got the most responses is on the references. There was no negative uh no negative reference. Everybody came back very, very positive about the contractors that 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 were discussed. Um, the there were six bidders, as mentioned, in August sixth, the the county received. The low bidder, based on the final uh bid tabulation, is J J excavating materials in the amount of four hundred and six thousand one hundred forty nine and thirty four cents. Um, at this time, at the county's discretion, we'd like to to recommend, we we did submit an engineering completion, an engineering uh recommendation uh for selection of the low bid if the county so chooses, in the amount of four hundred and six thousand one hundred forty nine and thirty four cents.
Mr. Martinez, now that we have Mr. Dolina here, should we talk about that uh gas line?
Yes, sir.
On Leadwick Road, huh?
Leadwick Road?
Yes, there's an existing gas line that was, I'm talking to Mr. Velazquez, that I don't believe it's active on the south side of Leadwick that the city had extended. Um we're discussing, and I know Mr. Dolina in the city has has indicated they may be helping out the county and help relocate that work before we get started and 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 mobilized.
So you work at extending that water uh that uh gets that line?
Yes, sir. It right now, it would be within that new right of way that was acquired by the county uh from the Leadwick family. So at this point, we're looking at, uh, there's actually not only just a gas line uh that the city has, there's also Valley Well, a Valley Telephone that has a line that's also being worked on as we speak. So by the time the contracts get awarded, Mr. Ramos obviously reviews this contract, I believe all that will be cleared, so there there won't be any conflicts.
Wait, take action, just. Um, one one more question in reference to J J excavating. Are they gonna be working in conjunction with the upgrades from Union Pacific? And when are you gonna see the upgrade from Union Pacific on the Leadwick Crossing?
So I was talking to Brandon Casper uh when we first went out for bids and they're they're moving forward on their scheduling to do this work. I know that we signed all the agreements, everything's in place. Uh, part of the process will be to to pay the amount on the estimates and and move forward and all those things. So uh they're moving forward. They're gonna be right behind the roadway, uh but there is gonna be a lot of coordination between this contractor, the roadway contractor, and the railroad. Uh, and there are line items in the bid that allow for some of that allowance for the the coordination with the the flagman from the railroad company and everything else.
And and that's why I I was asking, because if if you build the road first and upgraded, then you come back and make changes, then you have to go back and repair it again, then it's an additional cost. But if it's coordinated together, then then you can reduce a lot of those costs.
Yes, sir. And then what I'm what I'm looking at doing is once this thing gets awarded or or start the process for the contract is to get back with Union Pacific. Tell them we're moving forward. We have a start date coming up. Give me a schedule so that make sure that we're on the same page. It is, it is a lot of coordination that needs to take place for this thing to go smoothly, but I I anticipate that we won't have any issues, at least based on my discussions with U P.
And and keep in mind, uh, the Union Pacific, it's another four hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
And none of the oil companies kicked in like they offered to, right?
That's correct. My understanding, nobody came through.
I anticipated that. Um, so today we would make a motion to authorize J J excavating to proceed with the uh upgrades to the Leadwick Crossing in the bid amount of four hundred and six thousand said one forty nine?
Four hundred and six thousand one forty nine and thirty four cents is.
Four hundred, four hundred and six one forty nine?
Yes, sir.
And would there be a formal motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Just a second. Motion is has been made in second, and this is one of the first projects we identified when all this started with the oilfield. Um, it's taken that long with Union Pacific. Any further discussion? Mr. Martinez, all most of the delay that was created with this project with Union Pacific was related to the road mapping has text dot now corrected the road mapping to show what our actual road mapping is and not what they think it is?
No, I I don't believe all the count, all the text out records are updated to show every single county road the way it truly is. So that's one of the last meetings we had with text out. We were gonna get with their staff to update everything because I know their records don't reflect what y'all have on on the system and it needs to be. You know, we've talked about that time and time again, and I know that it's it's an action item for a while. But uh we'll we'll make sure that we address that uh when we go through the whole counting.
Motion's been made in second. Any uh further discussion? There be none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, I explained to Mr. Rylander we would wait on Dallas Clinic go after lunch. Um, I'll go to number sixteen. Discussion possible action. Discuss maintenance agreement for the maintenance of the annex from the center and library central air system. And what I like to do is go out for bids for the maintenance of not only the uh the air system, but for the the fire suppression systems as well. And it's kind of like what we're gonna do with the court. We're letting letting those people monitor and control it because it's a lot of money to not get monitored. So you'd have a special company comes and checks it. Um, and I'd rather put it out for bids, put it in the paper, get it out, get the bids, and then we come back for commissioner's court. The the fact is that we really don't have any licensed repairmen here and and the the system in um the center in Sinad is a carrier. I believe it's a carrier, right? Mr. Martinez? Jorge?
There you are. Sorry.
The the system in in um is a carrier in uh at the annex, I mean, at the community center, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And and the whole purpose is get a company certified carrier representative to bid, get a number of them to bid that can make sure that the warranty doesn't get nullified because it's a big, big unit. You know, and after the warranty period is, then we can consider a different type of maintenance, but for the time being, especially during the warranty period, that we want to make sure that we have a maintenance uh maintenance uh contract. And I I would suggest that we go out for bids, get some pricing and uh then and do that. We tried the in-ho- house housing last time and we hired someone and we paid a very good employee, very, very good. And when we ended up getting Mr. Almond uh to come back and redo the windows. So we ended up paying nine hundred thousand dollars for having the windows done, the A C redone. And because we thought the local person could handle it because they do local air conditioning, but they couldn't take care of the business here. And you have a big, big building over there that I'd rather have someone professional that's licensed, that's insured, that if they don't do it right, then we can hold them responsible for the lack of maintenance. Kind of like we hold a contractor responsible here if they don't do the job and Mr. Ramos got a five million dollar judgment. The same thing with these maintenance people. They gotta be licensed bonded to be responsible for the work that they do. So what I'm asking is, hey, uh let's go out for bids, let's write them up. We'll bring the bid specifications back to commissioner's court. And then you look at them, review them, and then we put it out for bid. That's what I'm asking, but I don't want to go do the work if you're not interested.
No, that's good.
So I make the motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye. Now, we're fixing getting close to lunch. I got the tax rate and I got a pack from Dora and I need to make copies of it and bring it to you. And she had a proposed tax rate of fifty two. I want to see the breakout, maybe I will look at. So I'd like to bring that after lunch. That gives her an opportunity to come back. And then we bring the final items after lunch, the bills and and reports, I think that'd be it. So I'd like to table this till till one fifteen and table, I mean, adjourn till one fifteen.
I'll make a motion to table.
Well, well, to adjourn uh till one fifteen.
Recent.
And and that gives uh Mr. Flores also the ability to bring back, I mean, Mr. Martinez, uh, to get that information.
Second.
Until one fifteen. And it's eleven forty five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Right. We're adjourned.